Recording and.
Thank you.
There's this one so active.
What were you getting your bottles?
I believe I got these bottles, generic bottles.
Oh, it's generic. No.
There's some people.
Isn't it eastern water?
I, I drink eastern water.
I do too. I was, I was, and it's because you said, what is generic as if I wouldn't be generic.
I just, at the beginning of this, you just bottled right here, it's been swiped seven times with eastern waters.
Yes. I'm just saying.
You already did.
If you don't mind, thank you. Why it's generic? I can't, I can't drink eastern water.
How about we come back six months later and have a new round?
We don't have a source for no reason, yeah.
No, but I'm just saying though, I think when people's practice is there, there's activity there. I don't think nobody's, I'm sure you're gonna have cameras up, I don't think nobody's on their bench. But if it comes to a point where it's that day, man, and you work around this hill.
Especially words asked of the units of operation that's been running at one place for so long, they're messing up the team. That's definitely not, we're neighbors, we gotta work together.
I mean, it was good, you could just play. I mean, I'm sure you also want to do so.
Thank you. Air water. No, I don't think. No, it's so soothing, I just watched it. Oh, yeah.
Does he even match audio too?
I'm just now getting the scan, um, or I see some good recommendations.
Hopefully.
Sorry, sir. Good to see you there, everything's good?
How's Robert doing?
Doing well, he's, unfortunately I tried to get him here tonight, he's gotta come to the next one.
Okay, make sure you tell him.
You know I will, you know I will.
Oh, he has a war.
I'm at the right meeting and I'm looking at these names like, oh my God. That's what we always did, to look up and see our faces.
Well, I didn't put my mask on, I'm a big.
Are you, I told you before.
My sister came in from out of town and I was like, oh my God.
So today, today your birthday yet?
It ain't yet. It's not that close though, that's. Thank you. Get close, get close.
He's hurting. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Touch that for me, there you go. Good evening, everyone, the time is six fifty-three P M, we are calling to order our planning commission meeting. For February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Oh, we always had staff doing it, I'm sorry.
I can do it.
Okay.
I think that's another thing we have to work out through our training, huh?
Yep. Roll call, uh, Chisholm.
Present.
Present.
He is excused. He is, that seat is vacant now.
Uh, Williams.
Yeah.
Davis.
He text, um, he put him down as excuse.
Present.
And, Airwood, we're late.
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Alrighty, thank you, has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? If so, the floor is open, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'll wait till we get into discussion. Uh, if so, the floor is open for the adoption of the agenda. It's been properly moved and supported, discussion.
I haven't, I don't know that we got the minutes in this packet, did we? Are the, the minutes from the last meeting in this packet?
Should be.
See then. Did they come in a separate email, is that what you referred to, or?
Yeah.
There were two emails that you received, the first one was the packet that was sent out on Thursday, or Friday last week.
Yep.
And then the, uh, email plan and map was sent out today.
What email was that we were conversing on about, I guess the name or the signature?
Yeah, I.
Is that last week as well?
That, but that, I don't think that particular email had every.
Do you all have copies of the minutes?
Uh, I'm not seeing it in my.
I only have the agenda and then the.
I can make copies real quick.
Okay, you know, this, um, electronic, uh, P C meeting agenda, and that's just exactly what it is, is the, it's just the agenda. No problem.
Councilman, can you send me the, send me the agenda?
Yep.
I'm looking for it in my email, I thought I had saw it.
Yeah, it's, it's far back there, easy to skip over, or overlook and rush to send it right now.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Say it again.
Look, there's eight, um, between the present and absent, not going in line.
You're in line here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Coming to court, won't he just pass out?
Yeah, for the roll call. Oh, you're doing the roll call, my bad.
No.
The six are this one, six, seven.
It's, Willis is missing, was Willis present that day?
Willis was absent.
Okay.
So, we need to amend the meeting minutes to reflect, um, Commissioner Willis in the absent column.
Yeah, Commissioner Willis on here voting yes.
So Willis was absent?
Wait.
I don't.
Now, this is from, this is from January tenth meeting.
Correct.
I think that's confusing, right?
Trying to remember one of them.
Didn't he come in, came in late, didn't he?
I can't remember.
I know he was here because my notes, there were several, uh, things that he either motioned or seconded that, uh, I recorded.
I may have misspoke there, he was, he put, he was here, I put him in the present section.
Thank you. Gotta get used to being secretary again.
Alrighty, um, keep going, we are, cause of course we're at a, we're in discussion at adoption of the agenda, actually. We can discuss the minutes at adoption of the minutes.
Okay, so let's continue the process.
Right, um, the one thing with adoption of the agenda, the reason I was talking about discussion is, at one of our January meetings, we were supposed to elect officers. Uh, nominate and elect officers, so that does need to be added to the agenda. Of course, the report and, um, meeting dates are already on here. So. You go on your new business, I guess, item C?
Sure. Election of officers?
That's correct. And if there are any further additions or subtractions to the agenda, please make it known at this time. And also, uh, Commission, I guess, since we're in discussion about the agenda, when we get down to item. Old business, item A, there has not been any communication from the applicant, of course, as you saw in the email. To this particular time, to the planning department, or anybody in the mayor's administration, or anybody on his body, so we will be looking at table that one more time. For at least another thirty days.
May, uh, what is the protocol that adds something to miscellaneous?
We're right, right now, yeah.
Um, I think, um. I don't know if it's the entire body, or if we wanna create a committee for it. But we have experienced so many changes with staff and then moving back in person from remote, I think it would be a really good idea for us to revisit. Our bylaws and all of our protocols, and maybe, um, talk about training at that time, um. And I'm curious whether we can add that as a discussion under miscellaneous.
Sure. And if all minds are satisfied. The floor is, is, I'm sorry, we already made the motion and supported and went into discussion, if all minds are satisfied, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. The agenda is adopted with additions. We're down to item number three, adoption of minutes, at this time, uh, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes that we have hard copy before us. The floor is open for a motion to adopt the minutes, and we could. Say, I guess, right now with corrections that we've already discussed, or are there further corrections? We can always go into discussion, we can motion the table, if you're uncomfortable at this time, it's all up to this body.
Motion to adopt the minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-two with the corrections as stated.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner King, supported by Commissioner Daniels, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four, public hearing, the floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing. What move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Williams, all in favor? All opposed? The public hearing is now open. Item A, case number twenty-one dash twenty-one, T A, propose rezoning for two eight four four zero Reynolds Avenue. Public hearing to consider a rezoning request for two eight four four zero Reynolds Avenue from B three, general business district, to M one, light industrial district. Hassan, on behalf of Sam Real Estate Holdings is the applicant. Ready, Jamie, you have the floor.
So the project site, uh, do you all have a copy of the report that we prepared? Okay, great. So, in the interest of exclusivity, I'll assume that you all read it, as opposed to reading it to you. Uh, but the basic premise of the report is that it's an existing building, uh, located at twenty-eight four forty Reynolds Avenue in Inkster. The property is currently zoned B three in the general business district, the request is to rezone it to M one of light industrial. And this property does not have any frontage on Michigan Avenue, uh, and does back up to the railroad tracks. So, the properties south of the railroad tracks, as you all know, are all designated as M one. And the purpose of the B three is on the district along Michigan Avenue is to, uh, present a retail face, a business space, to the community as you're going up the dump, Michigan Avenue. However, in this particular case, and there's several properties that fall within this category, uh, to the west of this particular parcel. They don't have frontage on Michigan Avenue, and they back up to the railroad tracks, and they have separate access, in this particular case. Uh, the property, uh, Reynolds Avenue is accessed off of Harrison Street, and there's some other properties to the west, uh, that are accessed off of, I believe it's, uh, Spring Hill. So, when we review the master plan, uh, with regard to this property and how those properties have been, uh, zoned, and what their future land use, uh, is intended. Some fine tuning, I think, is, is appropriate in this particular case. So, those properties that don't have the frontage on Michigan Avenue, and are accessed off those side streets that come back down, and that they do, and are adjacent to the M one zoning district. On the south side of the railroad tracks, we feel that it's appropriate, uh, that we could allow those to be rezoned, uh, to M one, to be consistent with the M one zoning district that is. Off of Michigan Avenue, while maintaining all of those properties along Michigan Avenue with a B three zoning district. So, there are several properties that fall into that category, but this is the first applicant to come forward and ask for this rezoning to occur. Uh, at this point in time, we don't have any further, uh, active application materials, but I do know that the applicant is interested in, uh. Some sort of marijuana, either grow or processing, or that type of facility to look, go in this location, we can certainly let them speak to what their intended use is. And that's the, the ultimate reason that they're looking for a rezoning for B three to M one is so that they can do that in this particular location. But, uh, given the site-specific nature of the property, uh, and the master plan, and the intent of the master plan, and what it's trying to do and incorporate. Uh, we are supportive of the rezoning request from B three to M one.
Thank you. Yeah, um, just so you all know, earlier you. Jamie was telling us about, it's on here twice, and the reason being is, we would discuss with the applicant under new business as the commission. And right now, because we're in a public hearing, we'll allow the public to address them if there's anybody from the public, just to kinda keep things clean cut. So this is a public hearing, if there is anyone from the general public who wishes to speak to the proposed rezoning for two eight four four zero Reynolds Avenue. This is your time to approach the podium and speak, please state your name for the record.
I was on the impression that we have already roped off an area. For marijuana. And it seems like people wanna come from other cities and extend it, and extend it, and extend it. We have to decide as a body, as a council, and as a city, where do we stop? All of these people come from other areas. My question is, have they applied where they live? I live here. I know it's going to pass, it always does. But, that's my opinion, they need to apply where they live.
This is a public hearing, um, the applicant is here, if you, if anyone on behalf of the applicant would like to address Mrs., Mrs. Barge's, uh, questions, please feel free to approach the podium and do so. And of course, state your name for the record as well.
Good evening, thank you very much, uh, mayor and commissioners, my name is Bruce Rosenthal, I'm here, uh, with Mr. Ficano on behalf of the applicants. The reason for the request, the application was, at this point, that we believe the M one zone fits within the master plan, and that's where our request is at this point in time. They are looking at a number of options with the property, ultimately, the city planner is correct. But I don't think we're looking to create something in a new zone, uh, that wasn't part of the city charter or that's not approved. I appreciate the consideration, we happen to be, uh, in agreement with the city planner, and are not looking to take new zoning requirements for the expansion of medical marijuana, if you will. Or marijuana proper, that may be the ultimate goal, but tonight we're looking for the zoning change from this honorable commission, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, again, this is a public hearing, so anyone from the general public who wishes to speak to the, uh, proposed rezoning for two eight four four zero Reynolds Avenue, this is your time.
Yes, and one more thing?
Absolutely.
Does this have to go before the Z P A as well?
No, this, the rezoning application, which is what the applicant is here for this evening, does not go before the zoning board of appeals.
So the zoning board won't have to change from commercial to whatever that is?
So, what happens with the rezoning recommendation is that the planning commission, uh, hears the request, we have a public hearing. If the rec, and then the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council. City council then will ultimately have the final say as to whether the property is rezoned or not, and there are two meetings that they will have to attend. Uh, at the city council to, uh, move that rezoning forward.
So even though it's a zoning issue, it still does not have to go before the zoning board?
Because there's no appeal that's being made at this point, they're asking for a simple rezoning of the property. If, for instance, the planning commission chose to deny their request, or if the city council chose to deny their request. They would have the opportunity to make an appeal of that decision to the zoning board of appeals, but that's what the zoning board of appeals does. The rezoning requests are handled at the planning commission and at the city council.
No problem. Alrighty, and if there are no further questions or comments from the general public, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
Actually, um, where are the applicants? We've actually have, um, one, uh, open and running business that's been open since twenty eighteen in the city of Inkster, and we're working on a couple more. Um, we're here to build the city, bring more business to the city, um, as far as to use the city for. You know, what you guys have to offer, so we're, we're here doing business as well, and other different points and things.
What are your other business?
We have Uncle Sam's tires at two six two four eight Michigan Avenue.
You just said two thousand and eighteen?
Oh, wait.
Yes, we took over in two thousand and eighteen, yes. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
And if there is nothing else from the general public, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing. And if there's nothing else from the general public, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
Are we going to close the public hearing?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Kane and supported by Commissioner Williams. All in favor? All opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Read down to item number five, old business. Case number two one dash one seven special land use and two one dash one six site plan, proposed hookah lounge. Review and consideration of table approval of a special land use and site plan for a proposed hookah lounge in the B two thoroughfare mixed-use district at three six four Inkster Road. Ahmad Youssef is the applicant. We kind of discussed this during the agenda. If we need further discussion, feel free to do so. But I believe the intent is to open the floor for a motion to table for another thirty days.
Motion to table for another thirty days, Mr. Chair.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Williams. Is there discussion?
I have a question.
Right ahead.
I remember at the meeting, they stated that they would be moving forward. So is it any, because you said during the earlier that no one had come to you, so they're not doing anything right now?
That's correct. At this time, there's been no communication after that night. I sent an email and I CC Jamie, the city planner on, and I CC the mayor on it so they could have everyone's contact information and whatever document I think I forwarded over to, it might have been the agenda that night. There's been no communication. So just being fair, the recommendation was give them another thirty days, but after that, the commission has to move forward with taking some type of action, whether we voted down or vote to move it forward because they have brought forth the information. But it appeared to us, they stood before us and said thirty days would be good. And I said, well, we'd be being sweet to you on Valentine's Day.
Mr. Chair, if I could just just.
Ready to move. I mean, you know, remember at the last minute, it was like ready to go.
Absolutely.
If I could just stay for the record, just as it relates to, and not just, I didn't want it necessarily to be combative when they were here. You know, of course, it's just what it was. Just at the same time, I think it needs to be said that we were in the midst of through code enforcement and administration, putting stickers on vacant buildings and properties throughout the city. And this happened to be one of them. And then they came to the planning commission meeting and of course said that they had been trying to get with the administration. Had had several appointments, but we never really had contact with them, you know, really to be honest. So, you know, I think that was a ploy to get them more time because they haven't contacted any of us. There's that time. So I don't, you know, we'll reach back out. I was thinking probably just, you know, be pertinent for us to just reach back out, Jamie. And see where they're at and let them know that we're serious about it. We tabled it another thirty days. We'll give them another thirty days to come back. So just wanted to just put that to the record.
That's fine. Yes, and please, you all reach out, planning or your administration, Mr. Mayor, let them know like you have thirty days. Because the planning commission is going to vote to approve or deny.
Yes, sir.
All righty, any further questions, Commissioners? All righty, hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. That item is tabled once again for thirty days. Looking at the calendar, that would be our March fourteenth meeting, twenty twenty-two. We are down to new business. Item A, case number two one dash two one TA. Proposed rezoning for two eight four four zero Reynolds Avenue. Discussion and consideration of rezoning request of two eight four four zero Reynolds Avenue from B three general business district to M one light industrial district. Hassan on behalf of Sam Real Estate Holdings is the applicant. Lost myself. The floor is open for a motion to discuss and consider the rezoning request. I think I said that wrong. I'm sorry. Because we're under new business. This will be our time to discuss it, but the floor is open for a motion to approve. Then we can go into discussion. Is there support?
Support.
So it probably moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Mayor Wimberly. Discussion.
So my question to the applicant is that, and maybe to you guys, because I'm not sure myself. So we talk about this, this rezon, because this is rezoned, correct? It's just that particular building. It's just that building alone.
It's, it's going to be the whole building, the whole thing. One thing also, we are working with a, with the armored group. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with them. They're actually located in Dearborn Heights right now at two seven two seven Beach Daily. We're trying to relocate them into the city of Inkster at Reynolds. We do have a letter of intent from them to come in and lease the property and start working out of there. What the armored group does is they build the armored cars for different countries, the presidents. You know, any government officials that do have armored cars, that's, most of them do come from that company. So that's another thing that, that we have that we'd like to bring here.
You mean for that site or a different site?
Same site, same site. That's going to be at Reynolds property.
You don't need rezoning to do that, do you?
Well, if it's light industrial is what they preferred there. So, because they don't really retail out of that. It's, they build things. They have special heavy equipment that.
What are you currently doing?
Where at?
In this building?
It's vacant right now.
How long have you been there?
We've owned it, I would probably say about four to five months.
Oh, so you just purchased?
Yes, yes. I'm not sure.
And that's what I was getting ready to say. I think that we need, I think we, I think we need to know what was the previous use of the facility prior to their purchase.
I believe it was some.
Rubber making plant.
Yeah, rubber making.
Or abstracts, rubber making plant. They used to make like big rubber planks. The building is huge. You got cranes. Cranes and all types of stuff in there, but they moved out about ten years ago now. That vacant, that building's been vacant.
It's been vacant for ten years?
Well, at least, for sure, on Reynolds. I know they moved down south. Tried to keep them here.
Okay, so now this is starting to get a little upset. So we have, so, okay. So this, this, this property has been vacant for ten years. We just bought it four months ago. You're trying to do something new if you would like to rezon this?
Yes, we're trying to bring something here and, and get it back alive.
I know for sure it's been on the market for at least three years.
Yeah, I saw that.
I know that, I know that for certain. It's been on the market for at least three years. So if that makes any. Oh, yeah, it's been vacant for at least ten years over there, for sure. Somebody can tell me different. I know that for sure, one hundred percent.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Yes.
If you all set, Commissioner Daniels.
Something's going on in my head, but I want to make sure I ask the property owner.
Okay, Commissioner Faison.
If I can go after.
Okay.
I just want to ask our planner, why you don't believe this is spot zoning? And if you could kind of speak to the future land use that was designated in the in the map that she shared with us?
Yep. So I wouldn't consider this spot zoning because it is adjacent to M one zone properties immediately to the south. I believe that the uses that are occurring on the properties that are off of Springwell and off of.
Spring Hill.
Spring, what? Spring Hill, sorry.
No, you're good. You're just on the record, so.
Spring Hill and off of Harrison that don't have any frontage on Michigan. When the master plan and future land use map was drawn, I would say not every single property was looked at individually as to whether or not it should be in one zoning category or another zoning category. And so there was a general decision made that properties north of the, of the railroad lines would be zone V three and those properties south of the railroad would be zone M one. So they are consistent. They are adjacent to each other. I don't consider a spot zoning request, especially in the anticipation that if the properties that are to the west of this property and don't have any frontage on Michigan Avenue, we would support a rezoning to M one for those properties as well. So you would create sort of a block that the north half of the block is zone V three and adjacent to Michigan Avenue. The south part of the block is all zone M one. And it would be consistent and contiguous to the M one properties owned south of the Bay of Railroad Tracks. Does that answer your question?
It does, but now it just, it just raises more questions. But, but I think we would have to have a map up to be able to answer that. So I yield the floor.
Yeah, I think mine is just to jump off a little bit about your question as it relates to just how it happened. Because I know that this property used to be zoned M one in that entire area.
Well, you should be zoned M one?
Yeah, for sure. For sure it was zoned M one. But I think at seventeen, we had some zoning changes. And I think what you're saying, Jamie, is that, you know, it wasn't looked at each property. Well, looked at, it was just, okay, yep, this is part of, this is what we want to do as far as the future plan to have this in the B three and it just got caught up. Because really, the property, it was a rubber staffing plant and he had a junkyard right next door to it. And we got every, and that whole area is B three now. So it's just like, that didn't make sense to me. But I just thought it was just because it may be, you know, future land use with the future land use map or something. That's why they did it. I'm like, this building is so big. It's like forty-two thousand square feet over there.
And, and I would suggest that there's not, there are many other properties that would fall in the same set of unique circumstances. But these properties that are accessed off of those two north-south streets off of Michigan Avenue, they go south and that ended in railroad tracks. I'm not suggesting that we look at the rest of the B three zoning district and say all of these other properties should be rezoned or anything like that. I'm just saying in that particular location, the request to rezon, in this case, back to M one makes other sense when you look at that particular location and those properties in particular.
And for the record, it's forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven square feet.
That's pretty close.
And that's good to know, what you're saying that it used to be M one.
Oh, yeah, for sure. It was in one. I think I went to two thousand seventeen.
You one hundred percent sure on that?
I know two thousand seventeen, we rezoned a lot of that area. Steve, I don't know if you can help me out on that. I know you got the wrong council during that time. But I do have records that it was rezoned during that time in two thousand seventeen.
That's back when the master plan and all that stuff got put revised, put into effect, had all those public hearings at the rec center here and everything. So that's when all the zoning took place.
Yep, exactly. And I don't think, like what Jamie's saying, we didn't have someone to say, okay, these particular properties should be part of the M one. But you actually have railroad tracks that run along there. If you could bring another business in, because my thought was, when they had mentioned it as it relates to the armor group, because I'm very familiar with the armor group. They're right here. Matter of fact, they're right down the street, across the street of On Beach Daily. For them to be in there would be fantastic because they're international group, corporate group. You know, the marijuana piece is just kind of what it is. But, you know, that's what I'm looking forward to seeing happen. Yeah. I think anybody doing marijuana in the city is just another thing I get on my soapbox with. With anybody doing marijuana in the city, if it's zoned right and because it's a legal business, they should have some added value to it. You know, for the general consumers, if you will, you know, I mean, you know, retail space. You know, another business, you know, it's not just marijuana, you know. But I get, I get where Mrs. Barge is coming from, because I'm kind of with that too. At the same time, I know it's a legal business. It is what it is. You know, at this point, we just need to capitalize on it. However, we can capitalize as a community. Make sure we regulate it to the best of our ability. But this particular property is just like, I was like, it's not in one? That was, that was a thought for me, just when I saw it. I'm like, what are we, what's the discussion about?
Well, the more into your point, the fact that the property doesn't have any frontage on Michigan Avenue. If they did choose to do some sort of marijuana-related operation, that would be not visible from Michigan Avenue. So you would be able to maintain that business district free of those type of operations because it has that access off the side of the streets.
No, not there anywhere.
My question was, there isn't any homes on Reynolds at all, correct? No, no, no type of residential, anything?
I think there is a house just north of this property though, right?
City's actually getting possession of that property from Mr. Ball right now. The Ball family actually owns it. It's so crazy because you're talking about the White House. It's right there. Right, is that what you're talking about, Kim? Harrison?
The, the north portion or the south?
I don't remember citing something. It's a small, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like right behind it. Yeah, so the Ball family actually owns that property. And they've been keeping up on taxes. This is so weird, but the property is ready. It's, it's on the demo list coming down. So we're trying to figure out, you know, how they're going to give it to us because we've already blighted it and we tore down the garage. The city actually tore down the garage because of some.
Caught on fire or something.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, so that'll be the city's property. Actually, the city actually has some frontage on Michigan Avenue.
So then, so then the, the, the answer becomes, no, there is no residential?
I mean, outside of Stratford, I mean, you know, we're talking, you know, Stratford's on the other side of the street though, you know, integrated community, you know. It's not complete though, you know, as it relates to the back that would run up against Reynolds, so you don't have any residential.
Yeah, but you turned down Reynolds. The only thing is there's a vacant field. There's a small little place. And then I think some utility workers, contractors stored their equipment
Yep.
down there.
And then I know that the bishops actually used a gate that's right there, correct? You have an access point here to do business on that area. So I'm hoping that, you know, whatever we decide to do regardless. I know that you guys are new property owners, but we want to continue to work with the bishops, make sure they have the access that they need in that area. I just wanted to say that for the record.
All righty, that was Faison, Wimberly, Williams, Daniels. Any, any further discussion?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion from anybody else who may have not spoken that's ready to speak at this time? All righty, hearing none. All in favor?
Actually, let's do a roll call vote for this one.
Okay. Yes.
No.
Willis is not here. Daniel?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes. Yes.
And Wimberly?
Yes.
Motion passes. And again, this is just rezoning. This isn't any other action because it's two more public hearings at the city council level. Then whatever the business ends up being, you got site plan review, special land use, all that good stuff. It's going to be a long time before anything really gets through it.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Chairman, because at the same time, a lot of times advocates and the planning department, and that's what we're really trying to make sure we get that trifecta. Because like, you know, okay, yep, we, we're good. Now we go to the plan, the council meeting. And then the council say, okay, we're good for rezoning, but you still have to apply because this is a special land use, correct? And you got to come back to this body, public hearing, then go back to the council, you know what I mean? If it, if we're looking to do anything in that area.
So the, the, just to clarify, Mayor, the special land use would be for any marijuana-related devices? Like for the armored car manufacturing, that would be a permitted use within that district?
Exactly. There you go.
I'm learning, Jamie. Thank you.
Just to clarify, there's two more public hearings that will happen.
At the city council level. Yep.
For this specific?
For just for the rezon.
Was it rezoning of the light industrial, right?
Right.
Right.
Is it two?
Not the marijuana, just the light industrial.
No, this has nothing to do with marijuana.
Because that would be considered a special use.
Exactly. They would have to come back after, they would have to apply and everything.
It's one or two public carriers?
That's all about that.
It's two.
Oh, it's two public carriers?
So we'll just read it that first time.
No, let me clarify. Sorry. There's two readings. So you have a first reading and a second reading of the rezoning.
There you go.
And you have one public.
Public hearing, which is here. Got you.
Got you.
Got you. Because that's the reading. That's what I was, okay.
I always count it as three. Because I tell people you have three opportunities to speak to this one particular matter here at the planning commission level, twice at city council.
Correct, correct. That's what I, yeah.
All righty, we are down to item B, two thousand twenty-two planning commission meeting schedule. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the dates? These are dates for twenty twenty-two. These are dates for twenty twenty two, of course, our second and fourth, of course, second and fourth Mondays of the month, unless it's a holiday, as you see, that one is moved to Tuesday.
Oh, I'm glad that's specifically noted.
Okay.
You glad to what?
That it was specifically noted that it was on a Tuesday.
Okay. Seven twenty seven.
Yeah. And do, I guess we, yeah, we do vote on immediate dates.
Yep.
And the floor is open for a motion to adopt the meeting dates for the year twenty twenty two.
Make the motion to adopt the meeting. For twenty twenty two?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes. Of course, during our adoption of the agenda, we added on item C, which is election of officers. So at this time, of course, we need to nominate a chairperson, a vice chair, and a recorded secretary for this year. The floor is open for a motion. Sorry, how do I say this? Floor is open for a motion to open elections.
I move to open elections for support.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes, elections are now open. At this time, the floor is open for nominations for chairperson for the planning commission.
Nominate Commissioner Chisholm for our chair?
Support.
We don't even have, I couldn't even get out, is there any other nomination?
Oh, that's good. Okay.
You you can accept or deny, you know, this. We go.
Well, I need a bit of training. Oh, I have, do I have to respond?
Well, yeah, we we both would, it's just I didn't want to jump out there if you were gonna respond to it and say yes. I was gonna say I'd be, of course, willing to work with you, because I'd never been vice chair before, I've been recorded secretary and chairperson, so.
I think we need a succession plan here, I feel like we should build that in for twenty twenty two.
They never do that in these types of settings.
You can do it.
You know, I like the behind the scenes stuff, but but like.
I can too.
But the running, the running the meetings, I don't have all the protocols, I I messed up tonight.
Mr. Chairman says upon it.
Yeah.
But he apologizes, I mean, we just keep him open.
I have no problem. I think I'm perfect, but I know. It's all up to you.
Here's the conundrum, you actually nominated the chair.
Yeah, he did.
That's a that's a conundrum, so, you know, I I'm in support either way, because both of you guys are great, you know. You know, I'm here for sure, you know, I'm definitely with the chairperson as it is currently. However, because I nominated him last time, I was about to nominate him again, but you beat me to the punch. But, you know, as it relates to growth and development, you know, I think that you would be excellent in the position. And like Chairman said already, he'll help you, so, you know, really, you're on the hot seat, you know. It's time, if you want to step up, you know, we are right here, I know I make mistakes all the time. You know, but hey, you the chair, you can, you you allowed to do that. So, and this is where you grow and develop, this is where you learn, we're the best to learn right here. Now, we did have another nomination that came from the audience, from this young man right here.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
He was pointing at someone else.
I don't know who he was. Come up here and do this myself, remember, I'm not giving that at all, so I'm gonna do that for y'all. I leave that for y'all.
Well, we do have nominations still on the floor.
Well, I think somebody got to say yes or no, hello?
I wanna, I would I would like to pass. I I really appreciate the consideration, I would like to pass.
Okay. Well, nobody and nobody else wants to nominate anybody else, and I know we have some unfortunately missing missing commissioners, so we can't even nominate them or ask, you know, for their input.
Could nominate them because they ain't here.
Then what happens when they not here?
Then what happens? All right, they ain't here yet. They don't show up, right? That's why you have VP secretaries.
Well.
She already said she would track them.
She already said no, and there's no other further nomination, so I guess I'll say yes, thank you. And I guess now we have to vote on it.
Yeah.
So, all in favor of nominating the chair's chair again?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes, thank you all.
Welcome back.
Act like I never left. No, actually, though, I had spoke with Mayor Wimberly and I spoke with Commissioner Faison, and this is just brief conversations, we were talking about other things. And I did say I didn't want to try to be controlling the planning commission. I did, I do value the opportunity, and I do like that diplomacy that is instilled is there. And it's, we've had like one stalemate on a vote, and other than that, we always seem to get through it and we figure it out. You know, there's there's always, you know, confidence and respect, so I I value it, so thank you.
Yeah, man, you do a good job, man, you know, you really do.
Alright.
I I've been around a lot of chairs, and I remember my first chair, I was over at Starfish Family Services and Dr. Weedy Cash told me I was gonna be the chair for the Westerway Family Health Center Board, right? And it's all these people, man, it was like so crazy and intimidating, but she just sat right next to me, you know, along the way, man. But, you know, I really just applaud you for what you do, you know, and just leading us right, you know, and allowing us to deliberate, you know, and. So, yeah, so I I support you one hundred percent, I want to see you continue to grow.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, now we gotta put Dr. Kim in in the spot, though.
Need to do a vice chair, Kim. There you go.
So the floor is for nomination for a vice chair.
Period, thank you. There you go.
I nominate Madam Kim Faison for vice chair. Do we need the support? There we go, we support.
I support.
You accept?
I accept.
There you go.
Are there any other nominations before we close the and vote on it? Hearing none, all of, the floor is open for a motion to elect Commissioner Faison as vice chair of the planning commission.
I move to elect Kim Faison as the vice chair for the. Support.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Williams, all in favor? All the polls, congratulations to your new role, welcome aboard.
Yeah, there you go. Especially you'll show up sometime. Show up late. There you go, you get it right.
Now the floor is open for nominations for recording secretary.
Mmm, boy.
And of course, you are, we have discussed the roles and duties a little bit more about what it entails, just because in past practices, it's been changing over time recently. Past practices, planner and order planner assistant was doing all of that, but we saw during our virtual meetings, it was too much for one person on that virtual side, especially if you're not tech savvy, to take the minutes. Vote, trying to record them and everything like that, and hope you didn't have any technical issues and missed out on anything. And so at one particular time, I asked the recorder secretary, I believe it was Commissioner Kane, I think to start assisting in tallying the notes, because Kate listened to an Excel spreadsheet. That way, so if she missed anything, she could always confer with the recorder secretary. And then, of course, talking to Jamie earlier, just with the minutes and things of that nature too, just briefly talking amongst all of us, you know, the recorder secretary certifies the minutes and things of that nature too, and at that particular time, he was the acting recorder secretary, but the assistance is needed at a much further in-depth thing, I can't even think of words, from the recorder secretary, so just want to put that out there, so whomever is gonna be nominated and accepts as recorder secretary, the duties will entail a little bit more than what they did when I started as recorder secretary versus when Commissioner Kane had it, versus when Commissioner Faison had it. So I just, I'm not not trying to scare you off, but we want to be upfront and thorough.
I nominate Commissioner Daniels.
I agree, support. Y'all, you said me?
Yeah, you. Yes, ma'am.
Agreed. Oh, my God, y'all know I've been some of the people's recorder secretary, you must have looked at my resume.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
There you go, excellent, perfect. Recorder secretary ain't no joke, y'all, oh, my God.
You can actually, can you have two recording secretaries? I'll just ask.
Man, that would move over my head. Right.
Oh, already, got you.
There you go.
So really, Jamie just said, really, I'm doing all the work, you just validate.
Alrighty.
I love it.
Are there any further nominations? I don't believe so. The floor is open. The floor is open for a motion to elect Commissioner Daniels as our recorder secretary.
Support.
I make a motion that we elect Commissioner Daniels as our recording secretary.
And I support.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes. Elections are, well, I guess. That's what I was about to say, the floor is open for a motion.
We added something under miscellaneous.
Yeah, we not, we about to close the elections.
Not the elections.
The floor is open for a motion to close the elections.
So move Mr. Chair.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Wimberly and supported by Commissioner Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes, elections are now closed. We are down to miscellaneous. Item A, presentation of the twenty twenty one annual programming plan and report. And then for those who might not have been here just yet, we do have an item B as well. So, Mr. Jamie, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I don't know if this is a new activity to do all or not, I'm I'm hoping not, but preparation of an annual planning program and annual report is actually one of the items that's required by a planning commission to occur on an annual basis under the Michigan enabling legislation. So this is not only in keeping with the proper protocols for moving the program forward, but as I discussed at the last meeting, it's also in a format that is recommended by the heading up the redevelopment ready committees initially. So as as part of that certification, you have to have certain things that are occurring, one of which is an annual planning program, but also that annual planning program needs to include certain items. And so what we did was, and we do this for all of our communities that have that redevelopment ready certification sort of in their sites, is that we prepare these reports so that it satisfies those requirements. So what you have before you is the twenty twenty one report. I will admit that it was a bit of a challenge to put together just because of when we came in and how all of that stuff happened. So it may not be a hundred percent accurate, but it's, you know, it's close. So, like I said, I'm assuming that you can all read, so I'm not gonna read it to you. But probably the even notices, you know, page one is sort of housekeeping types of items. The introduction and purpose goes through the information I just talked to you about as being required by the enabling legislation. Pages two and three and on to page four are all the activities, as near as I can tell, that were undertaken by the planning department, whether it was spite site plan, special uses, re-auction, see, rezoning, any of the certain cases that were just requests of waivers for certain things from zoning ordinance. And those types, and we did some sign permits too. So I'm not sure if there were any done prior to that, because like I said, finding the records, I'm still finding stuff that, you know, pops up. I'm very sure. We've been busy since we've been here, and hopefully, we've been providing you all with the information that you need to do your jobs effectively and efficiently. And so in addition to all of the, so you said, that worked out and it comes through the planning department, it's come to our attention that the marijuana ordinance does require some clarification, some modification, and some cleanup. Even with the amendment that was passed back in January of twenty twenty one that was adopted, just getting a copy of that and understanding what it said was, has been challenging this past summer. We got that now in hand, and we've had some discussions with the administration. And at some point, obviously, we're going to be bringing some modific, proposed modifications and revisions to you guys for your input and discussion. And then hopefully, now we go to the city council for modification and the option. The last part of this is probably the more interesting and fun part of it, is looking ahead for planning opening in twenty twenty two. We've got several things that are in process. The first two, as we've talked about, marijuana ordinance revisions are something that we're in the process of doing. The smoking lounges ordinance was something the planning commission had asked for at the last planning commission meeting, because it was something that you all didn't have, that regulated hookah lounges and smoking lounges within the city limits. And then the hookah lounge was something that was sort of a new thing for you guys, so we needed some direction for the planning commission to be able to follow in approving those types of applications. So I had, I'm gonna digress slightly for just one quick second. I've had several meetings with various marijuana applicants and even a couple people talking about hookah lounges and things like that. So one of the things that they brought up was whether or not the city would consider a in ordinance or provision that would allow consumption on site, a type of facility that would be related to marijuana consumption, so it's sort of like a smoking lounge, but for the consumption of marijuana. There's other communities, South Gate, Hazel Park, some others that have already adopted those types of ordinances. So it's not anything I'm putting out there right now, but it's something for you all to think about it, maybe that's something you want to consider doing while we're looking at marijuana ordinance and the smoking lounges ordinance as well.
Don't we already allow for consumption on Michigan Avenue?
Through the chair, we.
Yeah, we did, though.
Through the chair, so we, the council denied those. So event planning spaces related to marijuana, where you can get a license permitted through the city and the state, of course, and then consumption lounges, the council said no. So that was part of the adult use.
Yes.
Package. So we just said only the micro business component out of the adult use package, along with adult use retail.
Okay. I'm not sure I followed all of that, but okay.
That's just something that we can talk about and get you guys more opportunity. If we're moving forward, that that's time to. Then in addition to that, it's time for a five-year either review or modification to the city's master plan as it was done last time in two thousand seventeen. So the enabling legislation requires that that be at least reviewed every five years, if not updated and modified. So that's something that we can look at either option one or option two, which is, you know, one is simpler and one would be more complicated. I had spoken to the mayor previously, I had indicated that an update of the parks and recreation plan was something that the planning commission at the. the Planning Commission at the city wanted to look at and address. So, I've included that on the work plan.
And if I could, through the chair, just point a clarification. It wasn't just, you know, like, for me as a mayor saying, okay, we need to work on the Parks and Rec Plan, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page with that. 2009 and 2014, we actually had a Parks and Rec Plan. We haven't updated it since then. As a city, we should, every year, just like the master plan, every five years or so, update our Parks and Rec Plan. That way, we can actually go out for monies. And I mean, of course, Chairman, you know how important that is as it relates to just being, you know, ready or shovel-ready, if you will, to have, you know, D and R look at certain things. We want to make sure that we have our parks plan submitted, not just Parks and Rec Plan, but our parks plan for our overall recreation for this community. So, that's why I made this suggestion, so.
Absolutely, because I've gotten a call sometimes from Councilman Watley screaming that there's all these grants on the state's website that we can apply for. I said, well, you know, where are you at now? Look, and one will say something about canoe launching. But when you click on it, one of the requirements is you got to have a 26-foot something, 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 and we don't qualify off the rip. So, you know, with updating it, at least we would be abreast and not be ready to go. Commissioner Faison?
Our bylaws also say that we're supposed to review and amend, no, yeah, review and amend five-year capital agenda and capital budget.
For the Planning Commission?
Say, capital what now?
Review and amend Inglewood five-year capital agenda and capital budget. I thought we were also under RRC supposed to look at. I'm not sure if what we mean here on capital agenda is the same as like infrastructure improvements, but I thought that our, we, I think we owe MEDC something related to like infrastructure projects. Okay. Once you check into that, would you mind if we need to make minor edits to the report doing that?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So, the annual report, this is, you know, our opportunity presented to you. If there's things that you want to add to the work plan, so that we can, you know, add that into the report itself, we can certainly do that, modify it, and then publish a final version of it.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just want to tell you, I love the format. I love the recommendations. I love that you put costs in here. I just, I think you did a really good job. Thank you.
Took the words right out of my mouth. I thought it was excellent. Excellent. We'll be passing this along to City Council. It was excellent.
So, there were just a couple more things to go here. Obviously, we're continuing to work on the redevelopment-ready certification. I believe that we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with our representative from the state. We can have some discussion about who we pick forward and all of that sort of stuff. We have on staff several people who are more literate than I am about this particular qualification. And so, I may have them attend that meeting as well with that person so that we're all on the same page and they know what we're talking about and they, so and so forth. And then, the last two things are really more sort of bookkeeping type activities, housekeeping, just making sure that our application processes are clear, concise, and documented, so that when we're talking to applicants, new people and new business opportunities coming into the city, that we're all on the same page and we're providing them all of the same information and trying to make the process as painless as possible. And having said that, that kind of goes into the next thing, which is zoning ordinance amendments. And to help do the first thing that I just talked about, making some adjustments to the zoning ordinance requirements and amendments to that, I think will help streamline the process. One of the things that I noticed while I was reviewing, not only reviewing the ordinance, but trying to apply the ordinance, is that there are a substantial number of uses that are categorized as special land uses in all of the different districts. And I think we could help you guys do your job more efficiently and move things with the business community along more efficiently if we were able to take some of those currently listed special land uses and move them into a permitted land use category. So, we don't have as many special land use applications that have to go through this two-step process and two reports for everything, and then it has to go to council and all of that stuff. If we can come to an agreement on those things that are less
Intensive.
Yeah, but less politically charged and less subjective and less likely to cause issue, then we can just move that along and streamline the process. It's not anything you have to do, but it's certainly something that I'd like to put forward and have at least a discussion on, and you can either agree with me or you can tell me to go fight that.
I think, and through the chair. I think one of those things, Jamie, that you were speaking of, because we've been talking about that for some time now, is like carryout restaurants. Or special land uses. Like, I want to open up a carryout, but I got to go through all of this public hearing, special land use, pay Jamie twice. I'm just talking. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things that we've been running into roadblocks with, where people say, you know, hey, I want to open up a Cherry Hill Plaza, for instance. I had a guy all the way to the finish line, and then he was like, oh, a special land use? Oh, now I got to do this? Oh, now I got to go to another? I'm good, Mayor. And it's actually sitting there right now. He already put his money up, like, three months.
And so, as we, as we move forward with this process and as we get more comfortable in the position with the Planning Department and sort of, you know, working our way out of the situation that we were in before, one of the things that I've been advocating for is having, and many of new opportunities and new business owners and even people who are just contemplating or even talking about things like that, coming to the Planning Department first as their first stop in the process, as opposed to stopping at the Building Department or the Clerk's Office to say, hey, I want to put this in there. So, we, we've, we've got good cooperation so far with the Building Department and the Clerk's Office that most of the time they refer those applicants and those questions to the Planning Department. But I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, because I think, understanding how all of the processes in the approval process for the city of Inglewood work together. If they, if they can stop in one place and sort of get this overview of how the processes all work and what steps are necessary to get from point A to point B, I think it will help streamline the process and make things go a lot more simply.
And make it some more business friendly.
More business friendly, exactly.
I think that, and this is what we're really trying to build from this, is more business connectivity. So, thinking, not feel so, all this cumbersome. Yes, it got to go through to just get.
A little bit more friendly.
Yeah.
And, and there goes.
As long as it's done properly, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
A bit much, too.
That dovetails in nicely, especially with special land uses and things like that, too. A lot more permitted uses to move through the process more quickly. So, we've got a good handle on it at this point, and, you know, we're moving forward. Looking forward to continuing to provide those services as, you know, as we meet here this next year.
And if I could, one more time through the chair, I apologize. This is, this is one of my, my pet things, and I have to really thank, like, they sent me the perfect person with Jamie, because Jamie has really helped us really to not only understand the process, but try to, okay, let's figure out what's been happening with the process. And I think the other part of it is that we, as a community, sometimes we put ourselves in a box, but then we don't work to see what's in the box and then outside of the box, once we're in the box. So, now we're just there, we're stuck, and like, okay, this is the way we've always done it. You know, so this is the way we're just going to continue to do it. So, I think that we need to, as a planning commission, as we talk about training, even with forming committees to look at our ordinances with Jamie or with the planner every three to five years, because it's, it's one of those things that we should be talking about along with our master plan, along with our parks plan, you know, and then have enough ordinance plan, if you will, because they were good for 1984. You know, when we had the hotels and crack and all that other type of stuff down Michigan Avenue, excuse me, you know, I didn't mean that. I'm just trying to be straight, right? So, we just said as a community, hey, listen, we want to see everything coming into the community. Everything. It don't make a difference what happens. So, when a building closes, we want to make sure that we see what everything's happening as a council. But we know councils have changed, 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 changed. The time has changed. Thinking has changed. And when people talk about Inglewood, and Inglewood's a great place, but Michigan Avenue used to be crazy. Nothing like it used to be back in the day. And a lot of the things that we see on the books now, as I'm reading through, and I'm like, oh, wow, we did that for the Melody Theater. If you all remember the Melody Theater. You know, we did that for the bookstore on Isabelle. Now, it's the Coney Island, you know? So, it's like, okay. You know, with an actual theater, see, that's, that's the issue, too, that our history, because Henry Ford actually built the Melody Theater for Walt Disney. Yeah, for Walt Disney, for African-Americans. It was actually dedicated to Walt Disney. And it was for African-Americans, and then, you know, family, like you said, family theater as on the south side of Michigan Avenue to bring people in between or whatever. And we lost that history over time, because then it became the. You know? And then, we said as a council, like, what can we do to, and then we said, everything's special land use. It don't make a difference what it is. Put this into the box. You see? And then, it's like, you know, different administrations, we trying to figure it out, you know, and then there's just really no clear and concise thing. So, Jamie with his expertise and understanding, Jamie is seasoned, he's, you know, he, he understands, he's seen this type of stuff. It's like, what we've been doing is really just beating our own selves up. Because while we're talking about it, it's like we're still in this little box. You may be thinking outside the box, but I'm still in that box. And we're not all just figuring out because of time. And the time between us. We have to stay on top of that. So, it's like, we need to form a ordinance committee within the planning, like, within this body. We need to have us looking at those.
I think committees are forthcoming. That was, that was actually going to be one of my recommendations.
I'm sorry, I mean to talk about, that's one of my soapboxes, too. I jump on that one all day, too. Because he right, communication is key. It's like, man, our communication has just been so off. And it's, I mean, it's been two years we've been in office on City Council now. You know, two more years, it's like, okay, what are we talking about? What have we really done as it relates to really making us friendly? You know, yeah, the mayor's friendly, he want business, but what about after we not here? What, what, what are the pieces that's in place? What's the processes? How they look?
Well, I mean, I think we can, I was, I was holding back on some conversation for miscellaneous, but if it's okay to just talk about some of that stuff now.
I thought we were still at the report, and then once we finished going over the report, because I only just had one minor correction, I don't know if we needed to vote on it.
To accept it?
No. Said no? Okay. The only correction I have is just where Darryl Davis' name is, says council member behind it. He's a city employee, so I just wanted to get that corrected.
I'm showing this to Darryl.
Don't know if you're foreshadowing anything or not, but I just wanted to, because when the, when the report is published, you know, people may challenge it.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
That's in the report?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It is currently in the report.
So, so then, probably make a better question, because I know some of this information was pulled from the city website. So, you might want to check and see what it says there.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll definitely do that since you said that, 100%. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I know Troy be on top of that type of stuff, though, so.
So, that actually is another thing for the, for the work plan that the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily have to be involved with, but the Planning Department is working with Troy to provide easier access and clearer, more understandable access to the necessary and relevant planning documents on the city's website. So, I'm working with Troy to facilitate that and move that forward. So, hopefully, even as for planning commissioners and people coming into new business and people like Michael Ralph and others on the Chamber of Commerce, that, you know, when they land on the city's website, you know, there's something right there that says, are you, click here, and it takes you right to where you need to go, and you don't have to search for stuff or try and navigate, you know, you know, drill down 10 levels before you can find an application and some of those sorts of things. So, that's one of the things on the planning side that, like I said, Planning Commission doesn't necessarily have to be involved with. Unless, of course, you have some suggestions, which I'm happy to take. But that's something that the Planning Department is working on.
That's awesome. And that's, that's also making us more consistent with our RRC status.
Correct.
We do have, through the chair, we do have a RRC meeting this Thursday. I know I saw y'all, too.
Saw my email, but
Yeah.
because Safi reached out, and I was like, at 7:38, or 7:00 on the 3:30 PM, I'm in the school building, so.
Right.
I don't even know.
Congratulations on that, too, by the way. Your summit, yeah, my daughter's out there.
Yeah, she in high school?
Yeah, she's in high school.
Okay. I'm on the middle school side, getting my hair pulled out.
I bet you are.
But, yeah, so unfortunately, I won't be able to tune into that in any way, shape, or form. But I do look forward to hearing what the outcome is from that.
Yeah. I know we were going to meet with the admin first and then come to you guys, just because we wanted to make sure we checking all the boxes. We're really, really close, really, really close. Yeah.
So, when I talk about nothing that, that I need to be there with Thursday morning, right?
No, 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 this is something for, for, it's the, the city and this Planner, Planning Commission, something that you guys actually initiated a few years back, actually, and we've been going through this process. It's redevelopment-ready communities.
Oh, she knows.
Yeah.
We took the class.
I know she did. I know, I know you guys did. Pop, pop a feather on.
Commissioner Kay is currently in the class.
Pop a feather on you. Yes, you have to be at that meeting.
Thursday morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you serious?
Seven 30 AM, I'll send you the time. Strike that from the record. No, no, I'm not ser, I'm not serious, no man. You don't have to be there. Oh, no, no, we'll follow back.
It sound like y'all was saying that.
No, no.
But can you also coordinate for Elizabeth for when she presents here, too?
Yes, she's gonna, I, I really like your suggestion as it relates to having a dual meeting for the Planning Commission and the council. So, that's something that I am going to be talking to the council about for all of us, because I know the housing is coming on Monday, but we're not necessarily having a joint meeting, which we should, you know, eventually in the future. But I know because of COVID and those restrictions, as you can see how it's set up here now. So, but I would like to see us have joint meetings.
It would be awesome.
That makes sense.
It just, it just seemed like it was really hard to pull off, but.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
All righty, we are down to, and if all minds are satisfied, with item A under miscellaneous, we're down to item B.
This one that was added?
Yes.
So, I requested that we add this item to the agenda to figure out how we kind of get ourselves back on track, especially now that we're in person. I think just because we've had to make so many adjustments between COVID, being online, and now moving in person, you know, we have made slight adjustments to how we operate based on whoever our planner is. And now, we have like this beautiful plan in front of us that gives us like, that kind of charts a path for things that we can lead on behalf of the city and like really advocate for economic development. But I would like to recommend that we put together a committee to really kind of look at training, you know, so we're going to get a presentation soon from our, our RC planner, who's going to talk about how we can set up a training plan for the year. But I think that, like, we can have a plan and adopt a plan, but then we need to actually like set some things forth to actually like follow it. And I think there's also kinds of things, like. Um, and I think there's also kinds of things, like, you know, well, you've been a recording secretary before, so maybe you don't need training. I would have benefited from training. I think I need training to, you know, now be a vice chair. So I think those are the, like, those, those are some protocols that I think we need to establish. Um, and just kind of make sure that we kinda know, like, moving forward, how we communicate about certain things and what are our expectations, um. But if, if you don't wanna committee and you wanna talk about it as a whole body, that's fine too, but I just would like, uh, my hope is that, um, is that we just make sure that we're all on one page and that we like really see our plan forward. And, you know, maximize our RRC status and all of that.
Well, to piggyback on what you're saying, Commissioner Faison, yes, I know that training for officers will come in handy, um, because of the simple fact, it's been a time where I couldn't make it. I was up at telephone pole somewhere. Uh, uh, Ratliff couldn't make it, he was a vice chair at the time, and so it fell on someone else who was like, what the heck? Rare instances like that do happen, um, to be cross-trained, cause that's a, that, that puts you on the spot. You know, and I, I was so sorry, but there's nothing I could do, they wouldn't release me.
Well, I felt terrible.
Through the chair, I was sorry too.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's all, there's a, like, we spoke earlier, we're here to, Commissioner Daniels, it's a learning process. And it's just a fact of matter, you never think those types of things are gonna happen until they happen, and then it's too late. So, uh, that is being proactive and I, I'm down with that.
Now, do, do people have a preference for a committee or did the whole body discuss these, like, within the structure of a meeting?
Through the chair, I think, I think, I think him, I think maybe we just do it, just because I know my schedule is pretty busy. I think maybe we did do like you kinda suggested before, which is maybe on one of these times when we don't have any agenda items, maybe we can just still make that a meeting, you know, every quarter or something, and we can sit and talk and talk about the next training and stuff like that. That's what I'm thinking, as opposed to an additional. You know what I'm saying? That would be, that would be better for me.
So if I can interject just a couple of things. So, um, with regard to, uh, uh, having a plan and having a lot of things other than just agenda items, like applications coming through the process, part of the responsibility as the director of planning is to help you guys move your agenda forward. So where we do have meetings that are scheduled, regular meetings that are scheduled where we don't have agenda items, it's my responsibility to make sure we've got something to talk about, uh, and something ready to move forward. So we can use those as work sessions and we can keep stuff moving forward. So part of that's my responsibility to do that. Uh, the second item with regard to cross-training, uh, hopefully you find yourself in a situation absent the chair, the vice chair and the planning consultant at a meeting. But, uh, if you find yourself absent those officers, I certainly have been to enough meetings that, um, I could help walk somebody through the process. So if there was questions about what do we do next, how do we proceed, what's the proper well, process and procedure, I can certainly provide that assistance, uh, while I'm in the, at the meeting. So those are just two additional things to, to talk about. But, um, I think it's important for everybody to be on the same page. And unless there's something very specific that you all would want to settle, say, a, a subcommittee for, to discuss either on this or that specific thing, like, for instance, let's say smoking ordinance, ordinance. If, if you had a zoning ordinance and then the subcommittee, that was like three or four people that I could work with on the planning commission, that we would get information back and forth. Then we collectively came up with a draft that then could be presented to the whole planning commission for feedback. That might be a good way to move things forward to keep all of you in the loop as to what's going on as well. So that's something you can talk about as well.
So regardless of applications that we have, like, may or may not have next meeting, we commit to meeting anyways and we'll kinda start talking through like our protocols and stuff.
Yes, absolutely. And if, and if there's a particular training session, like training of officers, that you'd like to see happen, uh, sooner rather than later, I can certainly, um, work on getting that sped up too.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add. When I first became a recording secretary, I had no training. They just threw me in there. So it, it is one of those things where you just learn as you go, so. Once they found out, you know, I was kinda like, who's the chair? They kept making me the coordinator. I'd say the coordinator for years. But when I first became a coordinator, I had never been a.
Alright.
I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate you. I appreciate all of you. Y'all, y'all make it, I, I love doing this because of you all.
That's awesome that you can say that, cause I remember the time you didn't.
Like, when I was staff person? That was terrible. It was terrible.
You know, I remember.
What I have to say, I love being on the faculty. I do.
Uh, we love you.
It really does open your eyes to a different level in with business, um, especially like when constituents are calling you a business owners and they're trying to confront you about something, like, look, this is part of the process. Like, you gotta go through these steps. Like, I'm on the commission, we talk about it all the time, whether it's too strenuous or if it's too lax and we need to put some more teeth or something like that. And even with these ordinances, you know, just saying, the general art constituency has this amount of time, this, um, many times to speak to something, and you only get one to five people. You don't get the whole community until it's open and running, and then they wanna come to city council meeting and complain, they want you to undo it.
It's that part.
Oh, and we, and we have a vacancy amongst our, our group here, so there's a whole lot of pressure to, to pick a good person.
Oh, no doubt about that. I was just talking to the chairperson about that, you know? Uh, cause we definitely wanna continue to move forward and, you know, be as like-minded as possible, but diverse as possible too.
Yeah, they don't have to think like us. We just have to like respect each other.
That's it. And that's that part. And then bring something to the table, you know, that really gonna take us to the next level, you know?
Well, alright, if all minds are satisfied, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
Aw, man, I was just saying, I mean, I know I'm. Talking a little bit tonight, I don't know what's up with me, but, no, I just think these are things that need to be said though. And I think too, it's important that we do get back to the council and have a meeting together jointly with the council. So the council can understand what our role and our responsibility is. Because it's so, it, it's, it's kinda hard sometimes too, when, you know, like you said, Kim, you know, I thought we passed that. But there's the planning commission we did, and we went through the public hearing, heard from all the people, but then we got to the council meeting, it was like, okay, that's a whole different dynamic, you know? So the council too, so they can understand what type of pressure we're under and what we, what we're doing with as a planning commission. Cause it's like, it's kinda sometimes a slap in the face when we say, you know, yeah, we recommend this to the council and the council just like, oh no, we ain't even looking at what you recommended. We're just gonna think on our own, you know what I mean?
I think training is a part of.
And that's what I was saying, I think that's that part, you know? Go ahead, I'm sorry, let me through the chair, that's, that's, I was just saying, that was my part.
I, I think it's just really important for the council to know why, you know, like, we didn't just say, yes, you know, like, cause you all know that I'm very inquisitive, like, I wanna know certain things, sometimes I might be over-inquisitive, but if I don't know a thing, I really wanna know why or what is going on, so. I think that, you know, the council knew why, I, I just, so, to me, I don't feel that, I'm not gonna say that on the record.
Well.
I changed my mind about it.
I'll jump in, I'll jump in and say that it seems that there is an opportunity for council to go through training. Um, and any opportunity that we get to go through training, I would love to extend that to them. Um, it, it has, I don't know if anybody like has seen how many emails I've sent, but I'm like really pushing for training. And I really love to be able to extend as many times as we need to, to council, to join us. If they, if that's the right step to take, if it needs to be joined because of, I don't know, because of like how many people would be present, I don't know what protocols have to be followed when we're all together. But my, my biggest concern sometimes when I watch council is like, I wonder if the pressure that is put on them by residents conflicts with the law. And I'm just like terrified that we're not all getting the information that we need to prevent liability as much as possible.
And, and is that something that can actually happen? I mean, can council and, council and the planning commission actually meet together?
Yes.
That, that we can actually do that?
Yeah, it just has to be called that way. And then it'll actually, I mean, just because of what it is, the council should actually call the planning commission to order to meet with us. Not the other way around.
I think the, I think the last time we had a meeting like that was nearing the finalization of the master plan.
Yeah.
And other than that, we have had another big one, um, and then of course now, even to think about something about like that in these days, unless it was virtual, nobody was comfortable having that many people in one room or one setting. And I don't blame them, cause I, I got sick, so, um.
That's true.
But yeah, we can definitely do that. And just to you all, to piggyback on it, yeah, a lot of the times it's educational and, um, understanding what we're going through, like, I might vote no here and still vote no at council, but that was just my stance on it and my understanding. But trying to explain it to our colleagues who don't understand at all, and neither they just wanna vote to push it through and then wanna talk about it later, and it's like, well, it's too late now. I mean, or they just wanna vote no and don't fully understand it, cause like, nobody really looks at site plans when it goes to city council and stuff like that. And they'll tell you, like, we don't read blueprints or what am I looking at?
Or they don't know what they're looking at.
Yeah, exactly. So, it, it's always helpful that everybody's on the same page. And then if they still voting saying, no, I'm just, I'm just not good with this, at least they understand.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that perhaps is.
So I'll just interject two more things real quick. So, uh, when there's a situation where we have a recommendation that's coming from the planning commission and has to go to council, obviously that item will be on the council agenda. And I am certainly available to attend council meetings and convey my understanding of what the planning commission has said and what they, what their rationale is behind a vote to, or a recommendation to approve this or not to approve it. So I'm certainly available to do that. The second thing is, is that, uh, as far as training goes, uh, whether it's a joint meeting or however you wanna do it, we, we certainly have the ability to train, provide training to not just the planning commission, but we can also provide training for city councils, we can provide training for zoning boards of appeal, all of those sorts of things. So it's at the, you know, city's behest as to what they'd like to see, but we can certainly provide that to any of the legislative bodies.
That's important. Is there anything further?
I do have a question. Really, really small. Am I to assume, or are we to assume, if we do not get an agenda on Friday, there's no meeting Monday?
No, don't assume that. Um, the reason being.
Cause I think I'm at a business meeting because I didn't get an agenda. This is some time ago.
Okay, I was gonna say the reason being, um, one, if there's any technical issues and the agenda's gonna be in paper before us, you know, the dates are already set, unless you get actual cancellation notice.
So I'll, I have to actually get a cancellation. So if I don't get a cancellation, that's the only way I know that it's not a meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And I know myself, I will sometimes reach out, and I just did it with the church the other day. Supply priest was coming in, sent a bulletin, I was supposed to send out to the congregation, I never saw it. So I started reaching out to other, our, our other officers, asking where it was. They're like, you got it. They telling me what date and time and everything. I'm like, man, I don't see it, but I'm on my phone. They all stacked together. When I got on the computer, I filled it down. So I, I try to be, get benefited and out for that, so. Alrighty, and if all minds are satisfied, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Williams. All are favor? All oppose? This meeting is now adjourned. It is eight twenty-nine PM. You all have a happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's.
Get here all day.
This was a soft, it really, in comparison to council.
You should.
This is like, so nice.
Was this recording? Was this recording? Oh, good, because I missed, like, I missed like.
Exactly, but it's, isn't it beyond the entertainment zone?
That's what people don't understand is that, oh, well, when you selling the property, you selling off your city.
But if you.
See, I didn't know either. I had to look back on, I think it was two thousand seventeen. Or had they made that all to me, which was my presidential.
That's what you tell me, you say. I had a big ball, I said, you know what? At Cory's, I just, I got a big ball. I got, I got big balls.
Well, mister, um.
You know I'm nervous, right?
I'm already eighteen. So, yeah, so I was unemployed, ain't no checks coming to my house, my momma laid off for me playing. Yeah, that's how that all transferred, it happened real quick, it's like, that day I had to complete work, I turned in my laptop and credentials, I said, I guess it's my last.
I'm talking, I got, I just got a new corporate name, just got a new magazine. Yeah, that, that booster really is. I had a reaction every time.
Really?
I didn't have anything the first two, but with this booster, I can breathe now. Sorry. Well, you didn't do it, he might have, well, he might have. Covid. Cause he had it.
I had it last year, but now I gotta carry one of these too.
Oh, yeah.
You got one too?
I didn't get a hug from that Commissioner Williams flag.
What?
Say that again? I didn't get a hug, but I'll give you a virtual.
I'm saying this is crazy, because I had a lot of kids, like literally like, Mr. White really? Yeah, I voted for you. I walked up to Nikki's Greek town one night, there were like ten girls walking up to me, she was like, hey, that's Mr. White? Oh, yeah, I walked right back. Good night, though.
You was saying.
Yeah, that's what I said, I'm five, I'm a Democratic candidate for state representative, I just haven't formally announced that, I was waiting to finish doing different things, like getting the website up, Facebook. The Act Move or donations a lot, no, it's not one of the things, you're like, well, Steve, what else I can't even find information about? Um, and then of course, just with the job situation and everything too, I had in England, there was something there from some conversations I had. Um, one of the guys, what happened, my former colleagues started texting me, in my office, like, in my office with other reds, oh, but hey, congrats, I heard you running, I'm glad you won, I'm pretty aware. Those vans had prints up on paper, years ago, where they political stuff, they go through all the hundred and ten districts, they talk about the amount of money, and we're extra Republicans ready, and then he talked about the new candidate, well, for the new house district, I was the only candidate they spoke of thus far, I guess the other people hadn't filed, and so one guy was like, so I guess you'll be leaving, I said, that's understatement, I already left formally, they basically told me I had politically to take, which basically just saves my laptop in my apartment space, and I don't have to go through a higher process if I come back or resign. That was it, and he was like, what, he said, that ain't fair, and I said, here we go, and the reason he said that's cause he went, this happened with you, you black, and white boys up there running, they still working? I said, look, I'm not gonna thank nobody's livelihood, but you do what you think, cause he works in the central staff. I said, you do whatever you think, he said, I'm gonna ask, I said, cause I don't, I said, it was abrupt to me, I said, but I didn't wanna get in that position, and I had a conversation, and then we don't work back from up, I said, I was.